All special order, Bush, McCall, Roll.
Burgess, here. Fort, Myers.
Here.
Costin.
Here.
Washington.
Yeah.
Was this here?
All right, and then number two, resolution for a Class A, uh, state tax, specific classifications for the, actually of abandoned property in village, saw village, in Illinois counties, Illinois, for, for shopping center. We've got Mary. Want to, uh, you can have a take a piece of that.
It's okay.
If you want to.
Do, uh, thank you, uh, how about I give you a mic somewhere here right there?
I don't think I need it.
That would really be very hard.
You better take it because the people on the ground is like here, everybody. There you go. It's, it's.
So, um, basically we have the information that we are looking at a portion of the building only. Um, the resolution is an integral part of the application, we absolutely have to have it, there is an end user, but this is actually going to be.
How much can it be?
The incentive.
One cent?
The incentive is, um, Class A, the reason that we get the Class A here is because we are in one of the special five townships that the, that, um, has Nordans allowing us to get a Class A. Um, and this will have to go through what they call a special circumstance application because it hasn't been, uh, abandoned property for two years. But we have already talked with all of the people at Cook County, and this is the process by which they told us to go, that they told us to go down that highway. So the incentive is Class A, reduces the tax rate from forty-five percent down to ten percent, that of the residential rate, if you will, that lasts for a period of ten years. And then inches up to, uh, fifteen percent year eleven, and the code board year twelve. This is one because it hasn't been vacant for two years. But we're not the original. That's my story, and I'm sticking to it.
Any questions?
Yeah. Um, sorry, I know. This is Class A, is it for all the property?
It is not.
So we can separate, we can just do, just that end property?
Well, it's kind of, it is an excellent question, and I'm very glad that you asked. What the owner is, is doing, and has been suggested by Cook County to do this, is to subdivide, you'll pin subdivision, you know, that plaza is on one pin. And so it can't be done. We can't do a Class A for the whole plaza, because it's not, the whole plaza isn't good enough. So the area for which the user is, is being, uh, built, will be built out is the area that we're going to have for the new class A, they can work it.
Now, what, I know Roll, and I know that he's not willing to go, so he's willing to upgrade, nothing, just to fix the parcel.
There is build out that has to be done for this particular, for the new user.
But why, okay, but now what about the other, this, other owners or the other, uh, businesses that are there? They haven't done any upgrades for? I mean, we're going to give them an incentive to fix that parcel, but what about across the way there and, uh, Fairway and the laundry back on this side where he has a lot of insurance problems too? How was he able to just do that and not do the rest?
There has always been this dichotomy of incentives for new users as opposed to existing users. And you do know that we are looking at potential rent keeping that area along with some.
Yeah, we be careful once we do this, I said.
Yes. Or was not the gate the other? I mean, there is a school thought that says, well, you know, you're gonna, you're gonna keep TIP, and by doing a Class A, we reduce the increment. You do, for that person.
We have to check if he was.
That is, wasn't his TIP to keep, it's your TIP.
Well, I mean.
The TIP turned in by virtue of the time.
Right, and he did, at the time, we asked him to upgrade, update that, that parcel two years ago, and he had TIP money available before we distributed it out. And now, and he didn't do that at that time, and I even told him how you apply for it and make that happen. I'm looking at, okay, now you're talking about he's gonna do that one area, but what about the parking lot?
I actually, you know, Trusty Burgess, I don't know the entire story about, about the TIP money's available, but, um, in talking to Mr. Duckett now, I'm not sure he understood the process.
Well, he understood. I, 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 I took it step by step, and the lawyers talked to him, I would have tried to talk to him, talk to him and his lawyer, so he knew that he could have used that money to upgrade, update that parking lot, and probably come to the side. Now, I'm just looking at, now, we're gonna give a person that wouldn't do this at that time, now that a business is coming in, he wants to just do that, what about other businesses that are there, that are crying, that's broke, that he doesn't work, that the toilet, but, I mean, what about those people? They come to us and say, okay, we can't, we're gonna be able to advantage the incentive to do that, what about this incentive to fix up Crossway, where Fairway is at and things like that? What about those incentive? I mean, I, I didn't know it was gonna be, I don't know if it's a whole thing, if you can find, you know, that's something, but it's a gesture.
We can't do this particular incentive, and we can do a TIP dis, we can do that in our system.
Then how do we go back to the owners of, of the, of the size of the other business? Okay, well, they need infrastructure, um, upgrading. He won't, he hasn't done it, so not, so not, he hasn't done it, and that's a big crime about two years of going, I'm sure there's probably more than now. But now we're gonna give him a Class A, lower his taxes, and he's gonna agree to, only if that business comes in, and the reason why I think like he's agreeing, that he's going to, you know, do this because that business is in.
Because the business is, is, yes.
But, but he does have businesses that have been there, how are we gonna keep them there? I mean, I understand that I've dealt with him before, but I'm just wondering, okay, now that he's able to bring this in, how come he couldn't apply for it when he had the, under TIP, get TIP funds to fix the, but now we're gonna grant him this only because of?
Well, you know, for many years, that plaza had a development agreement with the original builders. And their, that increment went back on an annual basis to the original owner, because he was the master of the dollar. And believe it or not, it was before my time. So, I mean, I didn't negotiate that development agreement, nor, nor do I know how it came about, but regardless, regardless, he, the original builder slash owner built that plaza, it was extremely successful, and every year paid his taxes, the missing amount back every year.
Correct.
New owner came in, and the reason that the original owner wasn't getting any was because there was protests, because it's so bad, we were getting the amount bigger than we needed. And now, then another owner came in, this gentleman, I believe. And I don't know if, you know, about to come to the village and ask for assistance or what, well, I, this is the first time I've seen that one.
He's, he's, you know, he don't, he don't provide a problem. And I'm just looking at, okay, I'm giving you this incentive to do this, but you've been collecting rent from these businesses for all this time, and I'm still hearing complaints from the businesses, broken leak, air conditions not working, police not working properly, things like that, those are things I heard when I do business with them.
But the more successful that plaza can become, the more money it is going to generate, so that we can help the others.
Absolutely.
So that plaza.
But what guarantee I'm putting? I showed him, I, I practically, I took the man by the hand and showed him what he can do to help bring it. He has to put a light on out there, he has to put anything, other thing he does is put a little of that, um, tire down on the ground and the strip every year, he doesn't pick the model. There's, there's, every year when he put the grass, he got to move the water there, it's dark and dim in that, in that area. All of a sudden, now we're gonna give them an incentive to bring that in, but all he's gonna do is, is develop that part, but, but, there, there's nothing here about parking lot, that, I, I mean, you're gonna pull into a plaza that's still dark and dim unless he's gonna use, you know.
But then, but the Class A doesn't.
I know they don't, right, but I'm just saying, we give this person an incentive to do that, wears his good faith, and he hasn't done anything, at least I know the last time.
You know, Trusty Burgess, the only thing I can say to you is, and not even that one, but, I'm happy that he had used it. The end user stated that he ordered to come here and all.
That much I do know.
But absolutely have to have this, and oh, by the way, we have made him lower rent for a, for a period of time, because we can't make it up fast.
Well, they, they sold, because they gonna invest money. But now, he has, and he wants to invest, his, his, his agreement is he's gonna invest two hundred thousand into that building, which he wants to get a Class A for that. They're gonna invest close to three hundred thousand, because that's what they have to do when they come in and knock everything out, that's on them. But he is gonna invest the two hundred thousand. My question is, okay, now, all of a sudden, you're gonna do that now, but what about the businesses that have been there that are crying, you can eat shit every month, to ask you to fix the infrastructure, but we're gonna give, that, only because that business is coming in, we're gonna give him a tax incentive, but now the other ones just turn it back up, or we're not turning it back up, he's turning it back up instead of this, and that's my, that's my question, that's, you know, I know we're gonna, we need a tax incentive to bring businesses in, that's what they do, I understand that, and Vance off is a large business, they, they ship wide, and I won't blame them, I'll ask everything I can do, too, because I'm bringing some type of, um, sales, at least sales tax into your area. But for the owner to, to, to actually benefit, and that's exactly what is going, because now he doesn't have, because now he's not with TIP anymore. So therefore, the money's not there, so he, so he's gonna, our portion that comes to the village is gonna be abbreviated with this Class A for the next eleven years. So I'm just, you know.
That's what's gonna happen.
And, and, but in the meantime, he's had that business at least ten years, I know it hasn't done anything, and people that have gone, you see, that's why I don't think it's gone because of the infrastructure. And Vance told him that unless you fix that infrastructure, I'm not gonna go, I guess to kick over the knife and have it fixed on, on the backs of, of the village, because we're not getting, we're not getting our full interest. And, you know, I'm just, I'm just leery that, I, I, I'm not trying to circumvent businesses coming in, but this particular owner has not, we've tried to work with him, and he just said, I would have, you know, other owners down the way asked us to help them out, and we couldn't do it, and they still went ahead, and they still were able to do what they had to do. All of a sudden, now he's prized, I don't have money, I need, I need help from the village, and rewrite a way to give him a TIP, I mean, not a TIP, but an incentive for him to bring that business in, but I need, I just want something that he's gonna say, I'm gonna fix that, at least that parking lot, that plaza, at least tell me that you're gonna do that, to make it safer for, for people that, and, and at least show that much, but to not, not to do that, just go from just that point from subway all the way back to, I guess, a shark's chicken, and just improve that area, that's gonna be brand new, look nice, everything, the side, everything, we do it right across the way, you got a business about to fall down. I don't know if anybody's been there, stolen it, but, it's, it's good to have. And that's what I, that's my thing, I just wanted to give my piece of, that was it.
And I understand your piece.
Mary, did I ask a question with the, with the TIP, and the increment that, uh, TIP operates with the property, if value goes up, the property taxes, the increment difference, uh, it stays in the TIP? So do you know offhand what the property taxes are, uh, parcel at the end of the TIP? Nearly basis and what?
I don't, I, I can tell you point blank that I do know that this, um, in my research to re-TIP an area up here, if, if I say re-TIP, it could be that plaza. I do recall, I can't study offhand, but I do, I do put the values of accounts or statistics, so that when businesses do start to come in, it is, and, and up eight hundred and twenty there. So for a lot, we don't get any.
Yeah, right, but I guess the point is that, you know, at the end of the TIP, when it's out, the, uh, the property taxes are a certain amount.
Yes.
Uh, which, of course, then the village can receive it, and then when they reassess it, the property owners, it has the property taxes, the total property taxes, since the TIP ended, it's on copper now.
Thank you.
It's on cattle, so the village, uh, they receive it about the same amount of tax revenue from what it was tipped compared with.
Well, I don't know if we're doing all of them.
Well, the TIP is.
TIP, well, the village is giving.
It is a TIP fund.
Right, so it is for all the tax investors, so they not only, there's a portion issue of that.
Right, but all the other, the, the increment before was in the TIP fund.
Yes, sir.
Right, so as the TIP ended, then the village is getting sort of a proportional share of the tax, real estate property taxes, the value went down to the property tax.
So they're not going to.
And we're getting a bunch.
Right.
Did you know, you don't know if you have that, but the difference between item, twenty-five percent and ten percent, whether it is item, and, and then I guess, I would chime in as far as the, uh, the parking lot and, uh, Fairway and store, to me, that's more of a, it's a private matter between the tenants and the landlord, uh, they can enforce it based on their lease, uh, whether there are issues, ongoing issues with the parking lot, or if there's lights out, or if there's a safety issue, or, uh, hanging benders, or whatever, uh, except for the COVID market, there's a big issue.
Safety issue is definitely.
And, and bring it in front of an intruder or certain court.
Correct.
To bring it off to at least call, and that's basically all you can do, is ensure that, uh, the business or a landlord is keeping their building up, to call taxing, and then, ten months of alcohol difference between the landlord and the tenant.
Trustee.
We are going to the residents of this town, this village, to make sure that the property who may be is safe. Now, there's something that Trusty Burgess brought up that really needs to be addressed. And I mean, we, we have heard from people, has came into this hall here and told us that there's a major hot hole up there, and that he had the above a friction, has damaged a major car, we even have heard from a couple that said, fell down on it, it broke an ankle. So that would be obligated to the residents of the house, make sure that they do it. And I just have to ensure it's top and center, it's laughing, it's retail. Now, I know, top and center, food's market area, so we mandate how many parks we say it passed. So we, we mandate parks based in this nation, there are options that are taken.
There's been a certain way, uh, this is telling, you can't hold it.
I think, I think that I agree with Trusty, where we should be known by the front, that he has, uh, the mortgage picture, provides the basis of the, uh, safety issue, and the parking lot is perfect.
I haven't been.
Uh, I understand that, that, so, there's, uh, there's a miracle, but that is.
I'm gonna ask about the sixty-eight ten, um, you could add one?
Okay.
People? So, he's got the pen number, so he has this on the street, as an explanation. But we're using the, the resolution. Because we're not the resolution, we're, we're getting the application, and it's filled out by the application, to talk to the, to help the village with that address. It's on the resolution in front of the application also.
Tell Gary to get the hell out of my seat, shh. Go over, go over to my seat.
Everything, they stopped with the application, correct?
Uh, yeah.
Hi, Trusty, Trusty Burgess.
Yeah, we want to.
I don't know if you may ask, if they, I don't believe that lawyer, um, under the agreement, the resolution, um, it stated, I'm sure it just made the title, it stated that the, uh, public opportunity, uh, I'm sorry, that significantly, significantly included in industrial base, I think that should be retail base. And also, whereas promote industrial growth, that should be retail, and then also on the, in, in. Page three. Page three is second paragraph, and then page four, the fourth paragraph. And then the incentive, class living wage ordinance, why do we opt out to not require him to pay a living wage? I don't know, the lawyer said, no, that's not true. Why do we opt out not to pay, I mean, there's, there's a, the, it's not here for that, taking on these charges, you pay on living wage employees, or, and it is not required, and you check.
He's not a one.
John was telling me about recreation.
He's, he's the owner, he's not, he's not.
So they, so the auto, so auto.
I mean, they came back and said to them.
That's what I'm saying, that's what, okay, because he, he put it on there. Yeah, he, he put that on, it's under his name, but it says that, you know, he checked the party, he's not required to pay the way, and then also, um. At the back, I think this is. Special circumstance of the, uh, occupants, occupation, this is like basic abandoned property with special circumstances. What does that mean?
It's, I mean, when on Class A or Class Six, the, the industrial one, or Class Seven for that matter, which is the usual commercial one, those, those doesn't meet exactly all of the requirements, has to go through a special circumstances or a deal in the world, and has to be voted on by the county board.
And the place you address.
It's, it's on here, eligible, the application, the Class A, the address that he has, like is sixty-eight ten, you could add.
Right, and it says the address is one.
Yeah, because that's, that's what the.
And then it's based off of, um, the application, you know, the street address that is, and the vacuum. First page shows the Class A, how familiar the application?
Oh, yes, and then the last one, I guess, I guess is page six, it says, how long has the subject property been unused, and it says for twenty-four or more greater continuous months. That's two years. I'm sure that the, I do know that the, um, Chinese restaurant just left, maybe about six, seven months ago.
The county just has a record of the actual percentage.
Okay, so that's, so he just submitted this to them, and then, just, just copy.
They'll review all of it, especially once they get the specific order prescription prescribed.
Basically, what you're, what you're asking is for us to approve this and then go forth to the county board.
You are correct. Who's the correct version?
I'm glad, Trusty, my name.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Mayor, I just wanted to piggyback off of, like, some of the statements that Trusty Burgess made about the other property owners, they have talked to me too about the great disment they have, him just get a basic cosmetics done, I mean, the ones that serve food is.
Turn it to the mic.
The ones that serve food, it is a hazard when they have the roof that's leaking and they're trying to serve food, you know, and, um, the bathrooms are not working, they have to go from one store to another store to use their washroom, so I don't know what kind of audience you have with him, but if you could just let him know that I personally too, do feel the pain of the other owners in that plaza, if he would just do the basic fixing the toilet, fixing the roof, the stains in the roof, and they're preparing food for the public, so, you know, if he could just know that I can have a concern about him, at least doing the basic cosmetics to those places.
I certainly understand what you're saying.
I, 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 I was just gonna say. That may not be your job, Preste, but I'm just saying, if you have an audience with him, just let him know, it's great what he's doing, and I'm all for it, but the other businesses, like Trusty Burgess and Trusty and my, you say, they have some real serious issues that have, he's been maintaining them, he wants to do something new.
Well, and I'm not privileged, I have not seen these leases that he has with, with these end users, all these end users here, so, I mean, I don't know if he is responsible for what maybe it is of that as well, but I understand that, but. From your end user's point of view, there is definitely, they are, they are trying to get in as soon as possible, and we don't have to start out, um, we are.
Because that's on May first, starting. And then we know about this, you just got this?
When we receive the applications, the application requires you to put a start construction date down, and the estimated time that it's gonna take you to complete. No, no, March twenty?
Were you, you have the application on the back?
The application, yeah, the application is, uh, March, uh, twenty thousand.
That maybe when his attorney sent it to him for signature, et cetera?
But then when we, after that?
Last, um, last Wednesday, for the, because we wanted, that's right, because we wanted to have this on a committee meeting last Tuesday, however, he had not submitted his , uh, application yet, so I think we've been, like, last Wednesday, Thursday, um, the attorneys started working on getting resolutions, so we're at least getting on the agenda, call for a special meeting, uh, for tonight, so we had to make sure everything was, um, started prepared each Friday.
And now it's the April, April seventeenth, it's signed.
Again, when he signed it, was probably April seventeenth, but remember, it took time to get the application over to us, um, and then started getting ready together, so I, I know that we were trying to have it on the agenda last Tuesday night.
This is the twenty-third, you said the seventeenth, so it's six days.
We, we got it basically a week after, okay, I'm saying that they had the process, but then you want me to give you an approval within a week, of May first, another week away, and that's when you want us to start construction?
Well, in, in fairness, I think, and in fairness, some of this is because we had to wait for the county to answer, we wanted to make sure that we can go forward with this, and, you know, there's a lot of fabric for, you know, the county doesn't always return calls, so, 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 I mean, some of that I'll take.
Don't let me say, well, why couldn't we meet, or someone meet with Mr. Duckett, and talk about some of these problems that we have, before we go to destroy, I mean, I understand, but it would have been nice if we could have said, hey, we need to, and there are some of the issues that are going on, what do you plan on going with that, is that even here, even as a place, but, but we're gonna give him a Class A, or is that even here, or representative, is that even here to answer, at least some of the questions, some of the concerns, and, but, that's, that's what.
Hey, I think what's important to remember, though, you keep on saying we're giving him a Class A, we're giving him a Class A. This Class A is to bring a business to Saw Village. This Class A will help that business have lower taxes. Again, we've already talked about, I mean, we've had multiple meetings with the end user, we've had multiple meetings with, um, Mr. Duckett, to go over the fact that, um, what needs to be done to, to bring them to Saw Village, and not have them go to Dyer or go anywhere else. So the, the Class A, we keep on saying, is going to him, going to him, it's not going to him, the Class A is going to this area of the strip mall, where it helps us be able to bring a business to Saw Village in Cook County, and not, not go a mile that way to Dyer, Indiana, and not go a mile that way to Crete, and which is both counties. And which is Boe County. So that's what, what, you don't make any money. What happens is, I mean, the taxes are lower and who pays the taxes? Other than the business, the end user who's in there. They're paying their rent, they're paying their taxes, just like they pay everything else. So to be able to make it where this end user can come to this location, you have these tax incentives, which is set in Cook County, which is set up for the five counties, um, in Illinois, it's fine, right? Townships, five, five townships that are affected by the same thing that we're affected by. By having to compete against Indiana and having to compete against Boe County.
With all due respect, Mayor, I do know all about that. Bottom line, who's making money when this business comes in here? Isn't it going to be Mr. Duck? Isn't he gonna make money off that business? So therefore, just like the other business that's in that, that's in that plaza, he's making something, he's not just giving them the rent, he's not just doing. I'm asking accountability. That's all I'm saying. He, he's, okay, you're saying that the plaza is not going to help, but when everything, the dust settles, Duck is wanting to make any money off of that business when he comes here. I know the village is supposed to, you know, make a little money off of, on, um, sales tax and things like that. I'm just asking why he couldn't come before us and say, hey, this is what I'm doing. This is what I promised to do when I get this business in here. Because if, if they're gonna take us for a store, they're gonna make some money. And they're planning to make some money. And I understand that. They're not gonna, Duck is not gonna do this for hats of it's hard to run it out. So it's gonna be a win-win situation. In the meantime, we need to have something in place to say, okay, when this happens and while you're doing this construction, why don't you take and do something with, which you already have there? That's probably yours too. Now, I'm sure, I don't know, I don't know what kind of briefing that the ladies that you have is, but then what kind of briefing that was made? Because I can't see a, a place like a Vance Hall coming in to a dim lit party lot. So I feel like I have to make a briefing for that.
I, I think what you have to realize is number one, the village is not involved in negotiations. Negotiations between landlord and the tenant, that's between them, the village is not getting involved. The, the fact is that the end user needed to have a, a rent, if you want to call it, to a certain amount to be able to come to this location. So what, what we're looking at again is, uh, it, it's economic growth for this whole entire, um, plaza. This is putting, I mean, just professional, I'll turn to the next. This is taking this plaza, putting a anchor store in this plaza. What's it going to do? It's going to, number one, um, it, it's economic growth, it's bringing jobs to Saw Village. It is taking a lighted area that has been lighted for a long time and, and putting something in there. Again, what happens when, when you talk about the lighting, you talk about the parking lot? Again, that is between the landlord and the tenant. The village does not get involved. Now, the village does get involved when it comes to issue citations for, uh, safety issues and things like that.
That's a safety issue.
But again, they, they're not going to, going to come in and put a store in and it's gonna look like a dump. They're, they're investing, they're talking about investing a lot of money into this.
We need to know, at least we should know what they're gonna do, what's the brand, what's the real opportunity, Duck and Vance Hall?
That's not, that's not the village's job to get involved in negotiations. That's where you're wrong, trustee.
Okay, well then.
You're, you're not the landlord. The village is not the landlord.
But, but the village shops there. They shop there. The village, the village residents shop there. You see how limited that place is? You see the puddles that are in there? They're gonna bring a store in here and with no agreement, I mean, Duck, he, he's asked us for a class or a company. A Class Eight is gonna be awarded, gonna try to be awarded. In the meantime, he's gonna put money in there. We need to know what is, what is he planning on doing? I mean, it's gonna look kind of funny if we got one side of that plaza brand new, everything else is looking all, you know, lighted, as you said, before lighted.
Question?
Trustee.
We've been discussing this for thirty-five minutes and have gotten nowhere. From what I see, what we're talking about is we either go forward with this resolution, which if we don't, the process stops, the new store doesn't come, Duck gets no money, the village gets no money, the forty people they're gonna hire don't get any money. You don't have more lights that are gonna be in that parking lot because they're store lights. You won't have more people coming through Saw Village and stopping at laundry's or McDonald's or rubber rolls or anything. On their way to get their car or, or whatever. You don't have that. So that's what we have, an option A. An option B, we go through with it and we call and we address these concerns because I don't know when the last time anybody else has been over there. The potholes didn't come up yesterday. The lights didn't come up yesterday. The way that Fairway looks and Sharks and everything else didn't just happen yesterday. So while I believe these are all problems, I also agree that the village has not, maybe not taken as, as active a role as it should have. So if I come to the board meeting and say, this is what we're seeing from our residents, I do think it's something that couldn't happen. I do think it's something that shouldn't happen. However, I think as a good effort, faith for all of the village, we go forward with this, we move on. We ask them here or a representative or whoever else, and we address our concerns. Because he's not here, we're not gonna solve this tonight. The only thing that we can solve is whether or not we're gonna go on this to move forward. And now we're spiraling to the next meeting and we are all in there, hold on.
Any other questions for our adjutant? All right, here's number, I have number three. We have a resolution authorizing the dismissal of the existing development plans listed by the village of Saw Village. Anyone have any questions about this one?
Hold on, one minute. Has to do with, um, dismissal to NWRD and what, what, uh, what we have that needs to be done. I know I saw an email from Matt Burgess earlier today. It pertains to, um, few requirements, uh, established by the NWRD. The new watershed management ordinance, which goes into effect at May first. Uh, and requires changes, uh, that the village has to file. And particularly, it pertains to floodplains, including the logistics center. So it's, it's more aligned with the change in the inventory guidelines. If the village will follow the guidelines and there was a, uh, exhibit or attachment that should be part of the resolution, if the resolution was handed to me, doesn't have that attachment. All right. So you all have, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. Supposedly effective handles, uh, which the village will have to follow. New inventory categories for these things. Our, 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 our logistics center. Yes, and we have to know by November, any, uh, any new developments and we have to ensure that the village is following the guidelines.
What would, what?
In fact, this is a, it's a housekeeping measure, uh, establish a paper trail between municipality and, uh, essence acknowledging changes in inventory guidelines. They have.
Now, this could influence two dollars for.
They're, they have new guidelines, but they're coming in effect at May first.
If something which would have had any, uh, projects in the works, we could, uh, fell under the old guidelines and often provide them with a whole entire project of where it was going to, uh, where we are and how long it was going to take us to finish. So with the new guidelines coming in, maybe first we'd had no new projects, uh, already in the works. Any other questions? All right, here are none. As for a motion to adjourn. All favor say aye?
Aye.
Special meeting adjourned.